Good evening, this regular meeting of the Mount Horvath Area School District Board of Education will come to order at seven o'clock. Roll call, Danny? Diana?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Here.
Jessica? Kimberly?
Here.
Leah?
Here.
Thank you. Dr. Salerno, can you certify that tonight's meeting has been properly noticed? Let's all stand if we can and say the pledge of allegiance together. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. Which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have volunteered to read the mission statement.
I can read it.
Go ahead, thank you.
The Mount Horvath Area School District in partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you, Jessica. Item 2A, approval of the presented or revised agenda, are there any revisions?
We're going to approve the presented agenda.
Kimberly has moved and Danny has seconded a motion to approve the presented agenda, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the presented agenda is approved. Item 2B, approval of March 15th, 2021 board meeting minutes.
Going to approve?
Second.
Kimberly has moved and Jeff has seconded a motion to approve the March 15th, 2021 board meeting minutes, is there any discussion?
Wait a minute, I have to pull that second. I wasn't here.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. We're looking for a second now. Danny has seconded the motion, so Kimberly has moved and Danny has seconded a motion to approve the March 15th, 2021 board meeting minutes, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Opposed will say no.
Abstain.
The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the March 15th, 2021 board meeting minutes are approved with one abstention. Item 2C, approval of the March 29th, 2021 board workshop minutes. Jeff has moved. And Kimberly has seconded a motion to approve the March 29th, 2021 board meeting minutes, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries.
Right, abstain, this is Diana.
Good day, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I have to too, because I wasn't there.
Alright. The March 29th, 2021 board minutes are approved with two abstentions. Moving on to item 3, 3A, student spotlight, Grant Millsna. Where is Grant?
Right here.
Awesome, awesome buddy. Good to see you tonight, Dr. Salerno?
Welcome, Grant, and I see some very proud grandparents on the call tonight. And Grant's amazing family here, along with the family pet. Lupe, right? Am I remembering the dog's name correctly? Yes.
Dog's named Lupe.
We sure did have a good time visiting your house a couple of days ago to award Grant this auspicious certificate. And I also am pleased that we have here on the call tonight the teacher who helped recommend Grant, Melissa Jervasi, one of our superstar rock stars, and her building principal Katie Howgie, so I'll turn it over to them.
Yeah, so when we were talking about just how impressed we were with how well our students came back in person after being gone for virtual learning for quite some time, Mrs. Jervasi shared a really cool story with the whole staff that I'll ask her if she wouldn't mind talking about that. I think she shared an observation at conferences, Grant, that really stood out about you.
Hi, Grant. Thanks, Katie. So, I don't know if you and your mom remember the conversation we had at conferences, Grant. You, I was telling your mom about your leadership skills, and I said something about how, you know, I noticed that when you guys went outside to play, that you were kind of trying to, you know, get everybody to do the same thing out at recess, and you were taking the lead and being a leader. And do you remember what your response was, Grant?
No, not really.
You said, you know, Mr. Jervasi, we've all been isolated for so long, I just wanted to make sure that everybody felt happy and felt included. And I just, your response just blew me away with how kind and thoughtful and compassionate you were being. And anyway, I just want you to know how proud I am of you, and hopefully all of these other wonderful people here tonight are noticing and hearing all of that too.
Yeah, that was pretty awesome, and just shows a lot of compassion, being very thoughtful to think of your classmates and thinking about what you can do to make a difference for them. And that just really speaks volumes about who you are. And when Dr. Salerno and I got to visit with you out at your place, we also learned that, you know, you are giving, you and your family are giving to the community in a lot of ways. And that's a lesson that you've been also putting into place with the people who do equine therapy out at your stable. And so, there's lots and lots of amazing things we could say about Grant. You know, he's thoughtful, he is a leader, he is also an amazing writer. One of the things he shared with me last spring was a sample of some Harry Potter fan fiction. And as I read through it, it had all of the outlines, all the character descriptions, and I had to kind of look through just to see how long it would go, and it's a 45-page Google document. And that's just one of many projects that he's worked on. And, you know, at school, we've been working really hard at building classroom communities. And another theme we often talk about at the IC is what can we do to make the world a better place? And Grant, in so many ways, makes his classroom and our school a better place. So, very well deserving of the student spotlight this month.
Hey! See, Grant, I see there are a number of really very special people on the call tonight. Would you mind doing some introductions, because I know they've had such a role in your development?
So, I have two wonderful grandparents in one part of the call, and probably two more who are listening in another part. So, I have my Grandma Julie on here, and my Grandpa Paul. And I know their cameras off, but my Grandma Mary and Grandpa Jack are under the Mary Millsna mark.
Who are those two special people to the left and right of you?
Uh, my mom and dad. My mom and dad.
They're both very special people too, thank you for giving us your very best, Mom and Dad. And might I add, Grant has a wonderful sister, Gwendolyn, who I think is also a 10th grader too. Just always a very positive young lady in her own right. And Julie McKee, thank you for your support and the things you do in our school district as she works in our middle school. Let's give a round of applause to Grant, everyone. It's okay with you, we'd love to put your picture on our district's Facebook page and website, and maybe even share out a couple of those nice stories that you've written too, I think people would enjoy reading from you, would that be okay?
Awesome. Great, well, Grant, on behalf of the whole Board of Education, I just want to tell you to keep up the great work, you're a great kid, a great, great student, and congratulations for being who you are. You're a great person and great example for other kids, so thanks and congratulations from all of us here at the meeting.
Can we get him at the middle?
That's right.
Awesome, great, thanks very much, guys.
Thanks, Mrs. Jervasi.
Moving on to item 3B, school news. Item 3B, school news, I didn't see Kate. Dr. Salerno, do you have school news?
Yeah, I have a little bit of school news. First, allow me to extend a note of gratitude to several of our middle school students. In the 7th grade writing class, they were asked to complete a persuasive writing letter to convince someone to take up an issue that they had picked and thought was very serious to them. And maybe even some of you had had the opportunity to read some of these really neat letters. I want to thank Kelly Stir and several of our language arts teachers for helping to facilitate this. This is something that we do annually. This year though, because of COVID, we were not able to hold those kinds of discussions in the classroom whereby typically we have a couple of judges who also supervise the good work of the students. Do we heard about their desire to have everything from mandated school uniforms to, there's just too much homework, to let's start school later, to we need more time to eat. So, on behalf of the Board, I sent a thank you card to Ms. Stir and her students over the holiday break. I also want to note that several of our students are going to be attending the Dane County Equity Consortium Social Justice Forum next Wednesday, April the 14th. This is the second time our students have participated in this important affair. And it's quite an honor to have been selected, as we only had so many seats available to Mount Horvath to attend. So, we look forward to learning about that special event. And tomorrow night's a special night for our senior girls volleyball team, it's senior night. And we'll be playing just right here inside the gymnasium. And then Saturday, we're hosting conferences here, starting at, I think it was 10:30 in the morning. So, busy, busy time for our volleyball students. And lest we not forget that tomorrow is Election Day, please be sure to get out and vote. There is a number of important elections, including that of our school board, but also the Dane County, excuse me, the State of Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction, state superintendent, and county executive, and other important decisions to be made. So, please do be sure to get out and vote.
Great, thank you, Steve, does anyone have school news? Great, moving on to item 3C, citizen comments, those wishing to speak, please text their first and last name, 608-250-9166. We'll wait just a minute. Alright, note takers for citizen comments, moving on to item 4, personnel transactions.
Board members, I'd just like to bring your attention that the teachers and staff and administrators have been working hard already on trying to find staff for next school year. So, you'll see a number of recommendations to you this evening for us starting to ramp up our needs for next year.
Jeff has moved and Danny has seconded a motion to approve a personnel transaction, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and personnel transactions are approved. Items 5, A, B, C, D, and E, the consent agenda. Would anyone like any of these items polled? Jeff has moved and Kimberly has seconded a motion to approve the consent agenda, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved. Item 6, A, committee member reports, buildings, grounds, and transportation, Jeff?
Okay, we met on March 22nd. Yeah, March 22nd. We discussed the building grounds. Dave stated that the grounds looking pretty good, they were getting equipment ready for mowing and mowing. When the grass gets a little taller, there was some other outside work that needed to be done, trimming of trees. Brian said that he had bus routes that were open up again. We have two full routes, I believe, now. And that budget was going to make a difference if we buy any buses this year. Or how many by this year. And fleet was in very good operating condition. Then we went into the necessary needs, what has to be on the buses that I wanted to know about. And there was a lot of stuff that Brian brought up that really didn't need to be on the buses, but were a safety factor. They're there. And that coming years that by putting them there a year or two ahead, they ended up being equipment that has to be on the bus anyhow. So, and we talked about the newer buses, we have 10 of them that have the air brakes. We sent all the bus drivers in to get their license changed to have the air brake system stamped on it. We said you have to have that or you can't drive them. It was a whole different system. And we have 20 buses that have hydraulic system, and that hydraulic system, he wants to phase those out because when a line bus, you don't have any brake. And you could end up anywhere in a bad situation in an accident. And the air brake, you do have the choice of that braking system is not going to fail. It's bad. He was going to show me sometime this week or next week all that works. Whenever I have time to call him and go over, and he was going to show it to me. He also stated that the buses were well-maintained, and that he praised the two people that we have that work on our fleets in our vans, because they've been very, very busy keeping them in satisfactory running condition. And sanitization of the buses after each route, bus drivers have to go through and spray their, inside of their buses for COVID. And it was a very lengthy conversation, and I just put it on there, and there's one thing that we didn't cover because we didn't have any numbers in, that was the usage of our fuel. And that will be coming either in late May or June. Because of the bidding prices is about to start for that. And that ends my report for the buildings and grounds.
Thank you, Jeff. Finance, Diana?
Well, hello, everybody. So, finance committee met, was it March 18th? We considered and approved total two donations from the community. We remain very lucky that our community donates in such a favorable way to our school district. We also reviewed quotes for some new Chromebooks, which will be coming to the full Board, I believe, soon. We also discussed the Federal Food Service Assistance Program. Provides financial assistance to organizations that lost revenue during the pandemic between the timeframe of March to June of 2020. We discussed the audit report, once again, we were waiting for the final requirements for our single audit report, so we reviewed that. We also had a brief discussion on revenue limits, which we saw at our last board workshop. Scott did a wonderful presentation on that. And we talked a little bit about the revenue limits, and talked a little bit about a budgeting as we move forward through our budget calendar. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Diana. Leah, Safety and Wellness?
Alright, Safety and Wellness met on the 15th of last month. We had some amazing presentations by our school counselors. I always, I mean, I thought they did a lot, but I had really no idea what a day in the life was like for them. There's so much that they do that just goes unnoticed. There are links to their presentations in the minutes, if you haven't seen it already. We also reviewed Policy 364 on guidance programs, that policy had not been reviewed since 1987. The biggest update was changing guidance counselor to school counselor, and we'll be talking about that here in a little while. We had to table our mental health discussion because we ran out of time, but we did get a quick update on equity, and that committee is continuing to meet. And our next meeting is scheduled for April 19th. And that's my presentation.
Thank you, Leah, are there any questions for Jeff, Diana, or Leah? Great, we'll move on to item 6B, revenue limits, a, timer. Mr. DeYoung?
Well, good evening, everyone, thanks for having me on the agenda this evening. You know, it's a wonderful opportunity based on just this time of the year to be talking about revenue limits as we start to prepare for the state's new biennium, and what it'll mean for public education, and certainly what it means at home here in Mount Horvath. So, I appreciate the opportunity to talk about revenue limits. If you've served on the finance committee over the last number of years, we've talked about this on a pretty regular basis every spring as we start to prep and prepare for a new year. So, really, there's a couple just really important components that I would ask all the Board members especially to keep in the back of your mind. We're going to break up the presentation into three parts. By the time we get to the third part, we'll be getting down into some really nitty-gritty details. But I don't want the nitty-gritty details at the end of the presentation to sort of take over the really important pieces, which is really the first part of the presentation, just sort of the 20,000-foot level that I think is really important for all of us to understand. So, that's sort of my introduction. And then if there's any questions, certainly, of course, please ask. So, the three parts that I want to talk about tonight in the presentation, the first part will be just a basic overview of what revenue limits are. We use that term revenue limits fairly often, but we don't always talk about any, even the major points, we don't always get into some of the major points. So, again, number one would be just a basic overview of what revenue limits are. The second part will be diving in a little bit closer to some details, getting into an introduction of how revenue limits are calculated. And what I've done, for those of you that have served on finance, is I've taken a very small portion of the big worksheet, the big revenue limit worksheet, and copied and pasted it into a separate document. So, sometimes when we look at the big worksheet, it just seems a little bit overwhelming, it's just almost like you get overstimulated. So, I think it's good for us to just break down into some basic components. So, part two will be, just start talking a little bit about how they're calculated. And then step three, or part three, will simply be looking at the overall worksheet itself. And then we'll certainly have any question answers as well. So, any thoughts or comments on what I've shared before I dive into part one? Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to share a Word document with all of you. So, if you could give me just a second here. Okay. Please let me know if you're having a hard time hearing or seeing this. So, part one, what revenue limits are. So, revenue limits entered state law in the state of Wisconsin back in the fall of 1993. And I'm just going to, by the way, go bullet by bullet. The law simply limits the amount of revenue that a school district may receive from two funding areas. And that first one is general state aid, and the second one is our local tax levy. So, let's go back to that first bullet. So, general state aid is simply just the amount of money that the state of Wisconsin gives to a public school district each year to help it operate. Now, we'll receive, you know, grants from the state of Wisconsin and so forth, but those are all additional areas of funding. General state aid is something that is a bucket of funds that we receive, of which then the district decides how it allocates those dollars into its budget. The second item, the second bucket that makes up revenue limits, is the local tax levy. And certainly, we understand what that is, right? We receive taxes from our community each and every year to help us operate. These two bullet points, general state aid and the local tax levy, is what makes up revenue limits. So, that's an important piece that I would ask all of you to try to keep in the back of your mind. Revenue limits are made up of two buckets, general state aid and the local tax levy. Now, from a mathematical equation, one could say that, okay, if general state aid and the local tax levy make up revenue limits, then another way of describing that in an equation certainly is general state aid plus local tax levy equals revenue limit. Now, there's an important item that I want to address here, and that's really taking that equation and doing some reverse math. And the reason why we would do that is because the way the calculation works is not this first equation, but rather some reverse math creating a second equation. And the reason for that is because the calculation actually determines the entire revenue limit amount first, and then from there, it, they, the state tells us what our general state aid is in order to calculate our tax levy. So, another way of saying it is, I get questions every once in a while from folks that says, "How do you calculate our tax levy each and every year?" And this is really how we do it. We find out from the state what our overall revenue limit is of those two buckets added together. And then we find out how much general state aid, how much money is the state of Wisconsin going to give us in a particular year? And if we know those two variables, we know that we can take our overall revenue limit minus our general state aid, and that answer, what that difference is, tells us what our local tax levy is. And quite simply, that's how we calculate our tax levy. So, to take it one step further, I know it's a pretty simple concept here, but I'm just putting some numbers in. Now, these aren't our actual numbers, but for sake of conversation, I thought it would make sense to use some pretty, pretty even numbers for simple math. So, the example says this, if a school district has a revenue limit amount of $10 million and has a general state aid amount of $6 million, then of course, what's the tax levy? The tax levy must be the difference, or $4 million. And that's what you'll see here in this simple calculation. Revenue limit of $10 million minus general state aid of $6 million must be that our local tax levy then will be calculated at $4 million. So, that's the most important thing that I would ask that people, again, take from this presentation, is that important concept of revenue limits minus general state aid equal local tax levy. Okay? Now, there are some additional variables that come into play, because when we use the second mathematical equation, and I said the reason why we use the reverse math is because the state will actually tell us our revenue limit first, our overall revenue limit for the year, and then it'll tell us our state aid to help us calculate our tax levy. There's variables that the state uses to help calculate what this first number is, what that revenue limit is. So in our example, we said revenue limit was $10 million. The number, you know, with every district is something different. But again, there's variables that the state uses to help determine what that revenue limit number is, what that big number is. And so I'm going to scroll down here to the bottom of the page. And this describes what some of those really important variables are that help determine what that total revenue limit is. Because again, if we don't have that revenue limit number, we can't proceed forward with our calculation. We need that revenue limit number first. So the variables that are listed here, not necessarily in any particular order, are, there's a total of five of them. And the first one is a three-year enrollment average. So we in public schools always are asked to do an enrollment count for students in September of each year. That enrollment count for the current school year, that current September, is added to the previous two years to come up with a three-year average. And in fact, the revenue limit actually uses two three-year averages. It uses a three-year average from the previous three years and takes an average. It also takes the enrollment from the current year and the previous two years to come up with a new three-year average. So there's two three-year averages that we use, and you'll see that later on in parts two and three. The next item that we'll talk more specifically when we get into the calculation in two and three has to do with the low revenue ceiling. What this basically means is it ensures school districts are receiving at least a minimum amount of revenue limit dollars. You can imagine districts across the state for a variety of reasons are all over the map when it comes to how much money they're getting at revenue limit. And so again, the low revenue limit ceiling just simply ensures that every public school in the state of Wisconsin is receiving at least a very minimum amount. And you could certainly be higher than that, but you have to have at least a minimum. The next item has to do with an allowable per pupil change. Most of the time, it's increased over the many, many years. We've seen, you know, a couple of times where it's decreased. But an allowable per pupil change, and that simply means how much additional dollars is the state going to allow us to receive in revenue limit as a result of our enrollments? And sometimes that can go up, you know, $25, $50. Sometimes it'll go up a couple hundred dollars per student. But again, it's the amount of money that the state allows a school district to increase its revenue limit on a per pupil basis. And we'll talk about that in parts two and three as well. And then the last two items, I'm not going to get into right now because it's specifically addressed in part three, but it has to do with recurring and non-recurring exemptions. So recurring, obviously, the term recurring means that, you know, year after year. And then there's some non-recurring exemptions where you're allowed to increase your revenue limit for one particular year, but it can't go on forever. It's only for that one year, so that's non-recurring. So we'll take a look at some of those in part three. So again, these five variables down here that I just went through, these are topics that will come up in parts two and three, but are important variables nevertheless for allowing us to calculate what our revenue limit will look like. And because I stressed it earlier, I just want to go back because again, when I get into talking about details, I don't want, I'm always concerned that people are going to get caught up in too many details and forget the main focus, the main idea. The main idea, again, is revenue limits are made up of these two variables, general state aid and local tax levy. And this is the equation that we're going to focus on. We determine our revenue limit through those variables that we talked about down below. And when we find out how much aid we're going to get from the state, that helps us calculate our tax levy. One thing I didn't mention, but it's important to note here, our revenue limit dollars, general state aid and local tax levies is usually around 90% of our total revenue in our district each year. So when you're talking about that much revenue, it really does define our budget on the expenditure side of the house. So I am going to stop sharing there and come back to the screen and just ask before I get into part two and three, if there's any question on that equation, if there's any questions in anything that I said that maybe somebody didn't quite follow. Okay. I have a good audience, thank you. So I'm going to move into part two then. So part two and three are actually from an Excel spreadsheet. So if you'll excuse me a second, I'm going to pull that up on my screen. Okay. So this is our part two. And so again, for those of you that have seen, gone through the whole revenue limit worksheet at the finance committee level, this may or may not be familiar. But this is a snapshot of what I would call the upper right corner of the revenue limit worksheet, which we'll see in part three. But I, again, I put this together as our part two because it allows us to sort of ignore all those other parts of the worksheet and really focus in on a couple important details as we start our calculation. So this part two is talking about how are we going to calculate that revenue limit number? Because again, in our equation, revenue limits minus general state aid equals our local tax levy. If we don't know that revenue limit number, it's going to be really difficult for us to do the equation. So this is where we're going to try to calculate that big number for revenue limit. So the way the revenue limit calculation works is actually pretty simple in terms of math. And then it's just a matter of understanding some kind of major concepts. So the first thing is I've highlighted here the first row in the calculation. So the way the revenue limit works is we begin our math, we begin our calculation of determining revenue limit amount by simply taking the amount of revenue limit dollars that we received from the previous year. So in the 2019-2020 school year, last school year, we received a revenue limit amount of $23,338,200. That's the beginning of our calculation. Then the law says in the calculation that we must take our old three-year enrollment average. So the enrollment for the previous three years, not including this year, the previous three years, in our membership or our enrollment average, it was 2,406 kids. Okay? So if we divide the green by the red, if we divide our revenue limit from last year by our old three-year average, 2,406, we get a 2019-2020 base revenue per member of $9,700. So another way of saying it is, last school year, we received $9,700 per student on a three-year average. And we're going to then take that number and we're going to look at, okay, so if we had $9,700 last school year, how much were we allowed by state law to add to that per pupil amount to get how much we're actually going to receive this year per pupil? Now, the interesting concept here is I'm going to skip a couple lines and I'm going to move down to line eight. So one of the things that the state biennium budget from the previous, from this year and last year allowed is districts could add $179 per student to its per member amount. So our per member amount was $9,700. The state, through the legislature and the governor, said, we're going to allow districts to increase its per pupil amount by $179. So if I take the $9,700 and I add an additional $179 per student, that gets me to $9,879. There's one other little wrinkle in that. The state said, but districts, if you don't increase your revenue limit because of the $179, $179 increase, if you don't increase your revenue limit to at least $10,000 per student, we are going to allow you to add an additional amount to get to the $10,000. So we were only at $9,700 last year. And we said that the budget on a per pupil amount would only add an additional $179 to us, giving us $9,879. So the state said, but the minimum we want you to be at is $10,000. And that's this green that I skipped over here. The 2021 low revenue limit ceiling was $10,000. We weren't hitting that mark by the additional $179. So the state said, we're going to allow you, Mount Horeb schools, to add an additional $121 to get to that $10,000 mark. So that this $9,700 plus the $179 that we are allowed per pupil and the $121 to get us to the low revenue limit ceiling got us to $10,000. So you'll see here in line six, we were allowed to take $9,700 from last school year and add an additional $300 this school year. And what that did is that ensured that for school districts across the state, of which we were one of those districts that would have fallen below the $10,000 mark, it allowed us to increase to $10,000. And so we saw an increase overall of $300 now per student for this current school year. Once we get to the $10,000 answer of where we're at, we then multiply by the current average of this year's new enrollment, so the enrollment for this current school year and the previous two years. So the three-year average of this year and the previous two years was 2,382. So we simply multiply 10,000 by 2382, and we get to a 2021 revenue limit of $23,820,000. So from a budgeting point of view, we would say, okay, how much is our revenue limit going up? And so we would simply just do a math of taking the difference between our new revenue limit minus the old revenue limit, way up at the top here, the number that we started with in the calculation. And we would say, okay, our revenue limit for this current school year as compared to the previous year increased by $481,800. Okay? So those are additional dollars that would be coming into our budget as a result. Okay? Now, there's a couple of things that I added down here at the bottom. You may recall in part one, I had five variables at the bottom of the sheet that talked about what are the variables that we use to calculate our revenue limit? Well, we talked about enrollments up above here. We talked about the low revenue limit ceiling, again, up above. But the two things that we didn't talk about yet, and we allowed, we talked about the per pupil increase. But the one thing we didn't talk about, two things we didn't talk about yet, is these two that I have listed down here at the bottom, recurring exemptions and non-recurring exemptions. So what are those? Well, I'll give you a specific example for each one, just to kind of get the conversation started, and then we'll move into part three. So a recurring exemption would be something that you would be allowed to add revenue to your revenue limit calculations, not only for the current school year, but for a certain amount of years moving forward. So I'll give you an example. Some districts across the state said, you know what? Operationally, we need to go to referendum, not to build a new building, not to do a renovation to a building, not any capital projects. We need to go to referendum simply to increase our revenue limit just to help us with our operations, our day-to-day operations. So they may go to their community and say, we would like to increase our revenue limit by a certain number, let's say $300,000 a year for the next certain number of years. It could be, it could be ongoing forever. It could be for a specific time period, like three years, four years, something like that. That would be a recurring exemption, something that can recur. So you increase your revenue limit this year, and then you increase it again next year, and you increase it again the following year by a certain amount. It's allowed to recur. That would be above and beyond your calculation here. So if we went, if we had a recurring exemption, it would add to this $23,820,000 answer that we came up with. A non-recurring exemption is actually, this is a fairly common one that we see. And it has to do with a district that's in declining enrollment. In other words, when they do their three-year averages for enrollment, they're seeing a decline. And when districts are declining in enrollment, sometimes they will see, many times, they will see a reduction, of course, in their revenue limit dollars that they have coming in. Enrollment really does dictate those dollars coming in. So if your enrollment goes down, you probably will see a decrease in your revenue limit dollars. So what the state allows in a case like that is it allows a district to make up the reduction that they're experiencing for that current school year. And it allows that district to add that reduction, that amount of money that would have been reduced. And it allows the district to put it back into the revenue limit so it doesn't take just a massive hit in one particular year. Unfortunately, though, it is non-recurring. So when the district calculates its revenue limit for the following year, it will have to subtract off the amount that it was allowed to add the previous year. So this is where it gets kind of into more nitty gritty details. And again, I was hoping for people to at least remember those big main topics and certainly remember this important calculation here. And I will say, just to reiterate before I move on to part three, this concept of the low revenue limit ceiling that I have highlighted here, where we were able to move up to $10,000, that was a pretty, that wasn't a pretty, that was a very significant variable for us to benefit from as a school district that we wouldn't have gotten to $10,000 unless they increased that low revenue limit ceiling to $10,000. And then, of course, allowing us to increase any enrollments or any per pupil amount at all to contribute toward that $10,000 was significant for us. When we talk about budgeting in future years, we'll always be talking about what's the per pupil amount that's allowed to increase for next year? Now, that's always a topic of conversation. It's important to note here when that happens. For example, the line item I have highlighted here, $179 increase for this current school year. You'll see in parentheses in the description, it says that it was for all districts. So it doesn't matter if you're, you know, well over the low revenue limit ceiling of 10,000. Every district got that $179. It's just in our case, the $179 didn't get us to that low ceiling. So we were able to increase it accordingly to get to $10,000. Okay? So when I get to, this is the conclusion of part two, which was simply how revenue limits are calculated. It's actually a fairly systematic approach to how we determine how many additional dollars will be allocated for a new year. I think what I'll do is I'll stop right there and just ask if there's any questions before we get into more of the nitty gritty details in part three. the nitty gritty details in part three.
Questions for Scott.
Scott, to give you a break for a moment, uh, I suspect as I talk with many families, the question that's frequently asked of me is what can we do to help the cause? And with this upcoming budget biennium, I know the board knows this, but for our public listening and the board spent significant time at their last meeting talking about the budget. Uh, increasing those general purpose revenues is really critical for us right now. Uh, the two hundred, two hundred and four dollars each of the next two years of the biennium are really critical, not to mention uh the need for us to um adjust that three year rolling membership average uh to reflect what came out of the pandemic. We lost about seventy four students as a result of that. Uh, and, and so anything we can do to have people help us advocate for that. And then lastly, our, our raising that low revenue ceiling. Right now, it's being proposed that it be raised two hundred and fifty dollars each of the next two years of the budget biennium. So it would be ten thousand two fifty in year one and ten thousand five hundred in year two. Um, I'll be putting together a bit of an advocacy letter for parents and other staff members who might be interested in um helping our community and legislative engagement team send the message that this is really critical for us now. Uh, and, and Scott, piecing all these things together tonight, you've made it just such a, a nice way for us to understand. Hopefully that's given you a bit of a break uh so that you can keep on going with part three. This is where it gets really fun.
Thanks for the segue. Um, yeah, so part three is really reviewing the entire worksheet itself. But I will tell you this, in part two, where we were adding per pupil amount plus um an additional amount to get us to that low revenue ceiling, um, that is the major, major portion of calculating what our increased dollars will be in our revenue limit. Those two additional variables that I mentioned just a second ago, those recurring and non recurring exemptions. Okay, recurring continues year after year. Non recurring, we benefit this year, but then it comes off our base calculation for next year. Those are the things that you'll see next on the worksheet. So I don't want the worksheet to be overwhelming in terms of lots of information. Um, but um it'll be able to provide you with details on what that looks like. So I will pull up part three here. Excuse me, just a second. Okay. So again, this was our part two. It's the upper right hand corner of this spreadsheet. And this is the exact same data that you're looking at here. So um I know it gets a little small. Um, what I like to do, and, and for people that are on the finance committee, what I tend to do is not ignore, but just not really put a lot of focus on the highlighted cells to the left of the sort of kind of break the worksheet in half. So the left side is really just information only. And then the calculation that we're looking at is on the right side. So we're going to continue to look at the, the right side. So I'm going to increase this a bit so we can just refer to the right side of the worksheet here. Okay. So what you'll find here is um all of this is exactly what we just talked about in part two. Taking the old revenue from last year, adding the new dollars, finding out what the new amount was. And we ended the conversation saying that our new revenue limit was going to be this twenty three million eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Okay. Um, I color coordinated things um to the left side of the worksheet, but I, I, I tend to pause on getting too much on the left side because it is just information only. What I did is um I highlighted here in orange all of the recurring exemptions. And I highlighted here in purple, and maybe purple wasn't the, the, the greatest of colors for presentation, if it's hard to see. But I highlighted in purple all of the non recurring exemptions. What we're able to increase this year, but it's not going to stick with us for next year. So let's talk about the um recurring exemptions. The recurring exemptions, not every district takes advantage of all of them for a variety of reasons. Um, so I'm just going to talk about um the, the few that are, that we have listed for both recurring and non recurring. Transfer of service is something that we're able to um add dollars to our revenue limit calculation. Transfer of service is where we have students that um enter our district. And because of the costs associated with educating, providing services to those students, we're allowed to increase our revenue limit by the amount of cost involved with educating those new students. And so for this current school year, we had an additional nine, ninety five thousand two hundred and eighty two dollars that we were um taking on as a result of these new students. So that's a recurring. We add it to our revenue limit, and it will stick with us year after year because we will be educating those kids. Um, you'll see a variety of other um items there as well that doesn't apply to Mountmore schools. So we add that to our revenue limit, um ninety five thousand two eighty two. Then we get to this purple area. And this purple area is non recurring. Um, the most noteworthy one, quite frankly, is this declining enrollment exemption. So how the state looks at declining enrollment is they'll look at the old three year average for enrollment and the new three year average for enrollment. And if your, and if your um new three year average for enrollment is lower, then you're considered declining enrollment. And so for our district, as Dr. Solano just mentioned, with some reductions that we've seen in enrollment, um, for the twenty twenty ones of this current school year, um, the state allows us to add an additional two hundred and forty thousand dollars because our decline in enrollment amounted to that much in, in dollars. Okay. Down here at the bottom is something fairly new, um having um private school voucher aid. Um, and so when you have a um private school um in the voucher program, um, the, the state allows us to add some dollars to our revenue limit to account for that. There's also some other reductions, other places outside the revenue limit that kind of um uh balance each other out. Um, but nevertheless, for conversation here, it's additional dollars that we see on our revenue limit um to compensate. And so the overall amount that we see here for a non recurring exemptions is four hundred and seventeen thousand eight forty four. Okay. So if I go back to the top here and I take our number from part two that we arrived at, this was our part two, was just this here. And we ended at twenty three million eight hundred and twenty thousand. We're going to add to that ninety five thousand two eighty two. And we're going to add to that another four hundred and seventeen thousand eight forty four. And when we add those numbers together, we're going to get, I'll hide these. Add the orange and add the purple. We're going to get a overall revenue limit for this current school year, and that's why I have it asterisk, because I wanted to point that number out, of twenty four million three hundred and thirty three thousand one hundred and twenty six dollars. So um if we were to say, well, gosh, what is our revenue limit dollars coming in for this school year? The answer is this highlighted row, twenty four million three hundred and thirty three thousand one hundred and twenty six dollars. So when we look at our budget last year and how much could we afford to have increased in operations, increase in our budget for this year, we would take our revenue limit amount from last year, compare it to our revenue limit amount for this year, and that would determine how many additional dollars we have coming this year under revenue limit. And again, remember, ninety percent of our revenue comes from general state aid and local property taxes. So that's the, really the driver behind this line that's highlighted, um row thirty two or line eleven. Okay. Now, remember, we talked about in that simple calculation that we need to find out the revenue limit number first, then the state tells us how much aid they'll be sending us to help us determine our tax levy. That's what's happening in the remainder of this worksheet. The state is telling us that we will be receiving fourteen million two hundred and thirty four thousand five hundred and fifty seven dollars in state aid. So if we take our twenty four point three million dollar total revenue limit, again, going back to that calculation from part one, and we subtract off fourteen point two million in general state aid, that difference is our um tack, our fund ten general operations levy, which is ten million ninety eight thousand five sixty nine. So again, um going back to what I mentioned earlier tonight, you know, when people say, well, how do you, how do you calculate the tax levy? Again, the tax levy is calculated once we find out our total revenue limit and we subtract off how much money the state will be sending us. That difference determines what our general operational tax levy is. So our fund ten, for those of you on the finance committee, we talk about different funds and accounting. Um, our general operating budget is called fund ten. That tax levy amount is ten million ninety eight thousand five sixty nine for this current school year. Now, the only additional item that we add to our levy above and beyond this ten million ninety eight thousand five sixty nine amount is any referendum um payments that we're making um from referendum that have passed over the years. So we make principal and interest payments every single calendar year. And so we need to account for those payments in our tax levy because again, through referendum, the community has authorized the district to increase its tax levy by a certain amount to fund various projects. And so for this particular school year, um, we had to increase our tax levy in additional, and I have it highlighted here in blue, three million eight hundred and ninety eight thousand seventy five dollars. And so if you were to go back into the annual meeting booklet from back up in August uh of last summer, you would see that this amount would be listed in that booklet. So needless to say, from a tax levy point of view, again, now that we know up here our total revenue limit, and we subtract off our general aid, we found out our general operating levy, that difference, and then we just add to it the amount of our referendum debt that we took on. And when you add those, the ten million dollar ninety eight five sixty nine to the three point eight, three point nine million dollar in blue, our total levy for this school year was thirteen million nine ninety six, six forty four. Okay. And then the, the worksheet, based on property values, will determine that the overall mill rate for the district was eight dollars and seventy eight cents for the year. Okay. So the, as we kind of get down into more and more details, not only do we define the tax levy then, but we also, the worksheet allows us to define um the mill rate as well. So I'm going to stop there um and just ask if there's any questions. And maybe, please, please.
Um, we hear from Diana every month and report that we're a district fortunate to receive donations. Uh, tell me how the state looks at donations in terms of receiving money from community supporters and area employers. Are there a limit to those donations that a school can accept each year?
Yeah, great question. So um donations are outside the revenue limit. And so as a district accepts donations, whether it's monetary or it's equipment, that kind of thing, um, it is outside the revenue limit. Um, and then it's just a matter of how we account for that in our books. Um, there are funds that allow us to put those dollars in that can carry over year after year. Um, there's also, if we know we're going to spend the donated dollars in the current school year, if it's, if it's a monetary donation, um, we can also keep it in our local operating budget. Um, but donations are outside the revenue limit. It is not something we account for in the calculation. Did that answer your question? Okay. Thank you for the, yeah, we, as, as we heard earlier in the meeting, we are very fortunate that we have donations um from folks, so um that's a um really timely question.
Other questions for Scott?
This is Leah. I don't have a question, but that was fantastic, and thank you for color coding because that helps my brain like follow along, so thank you for that. That was fantastic.
Thank you.
Yes, that was thank, thank you for that. It was great. It's just like from someone who has not been on the finance committee. And, and I don't, we have a student, Corey, who's on the call. I think maybe he deserves a certificate of an intro to school finance after this.
All right, anything else from the board? Scott, any other comments from you?
Um, thanks for asking. Other than number one, thanks for having me on the agenda. Um, thanks for being flexible and allowing me to do it this evening. Um, you know, every year we get into um budget cycles and um the challenges that go along with it. Um, hopefully you can at least refer back to that, and I'll say it again because I'm a broken record here. That part one is so important. Revenue limit minus general state aid equals our local tax levy, and that's how we calculate our levy. And that's how revenue limits um are doing what they were intended to do, which is to um, you know, determine how much money a district's able to raise, and then we're able to budget accordingly. So um thanks for allowing me to go through all three parts. Um, I know sometimes going into spreadsheets right, right away can be a little bit mind numbing. Um, but um certainly thank you for allowing me to share.
Anything else on this topic? All right, we'll move on. Thanks again, Scott. Great job. Uh, item succeed, high school schedule alteration to begin in the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two school year. Principal Cody.
Well, thank you.
Uh, Corey Olson, welcome, Corey.
Yeah, welcome, Corey. Like, uh, like I said, I think he definitely gets some kind of like school finance award here. And Leah, just so you know, I have some color coding for you later. That's, if you like color coding, I've got you here.
I'm so excited.
Just wanted to get you hyped up a couple of slides early. Um, just thank you, everybody, for um uh for kind of uh allowing us to be here today, Corey and I both. I am going to, as long as I've got a do, I'm going to present to you here and once we can get there. Um, so, well, you know, I know I've talked to the education committee a little bit about um our bell schedule change. And if you've talked to some students or teachers over the last, gosh, over a year now, uh, people know that when I arrived, I think one of the first things I saw when I got the job was, boy, eight class periods with an advisory and two lunches. Like, it was like fourteen lines long of a schedule um and coming from a place where you have ninety minute periods. That's a different world. Um, so I was just curious as to thinking behind it when it's been there. So um I wanted to dig in a little bit because there's a lot of things that go along with a bell schedule that are about um curriculum and instruction and, and mental health, and just all kinds of pieces. But to give you a little background of what our schedule looks like right now, um, you can see, this would be the, I shouldn't say now, sorry, this is pre COVID. This is not now, this is in the before time. In the before time, uh, we had roughly forty two minute class periods, five minute passing times. What forty five minutes a day spent in the halls? Eight periods with an advisory and then two lunches, um, just because of our students and being able to just elevate those lunches. Um, so you can see here, starting at, uh, class actually starts at eight oh five, goes to three twenty five. Um, this is kind of our non COVID schedule up until I think this or something similar with maybe without advisory has been around for a long, long time um with eight periods, whether it's been forty two to forty five, forty six minutes uh of kind of a variable. Um, but when we think about all the different things that go into a schedule and the things that matter in the research, I kind of want to jump into some heady stuff here with John Hattie. If you know John Hattie's work, um, did a lot of meta, meta analysis of over twelve, a thousand different studies. Essentially, took a thousand different studies into the study of those studies regarding the biggest impact on um effect size in the classroom, things that have the biggest bang for the buck uh in an educational setting. Um, and one of the things we look at is like, how, how, which one of these can we have an impact? Now, point four, I believe, is kind of the, you saw point four, you would say it had essentially is just kind of the, the neutral. Anything above that, you're actually starting to get a better bang for your buck. And you'll see feedbacks of point seven three, teacher clarity is a point seven five, response intervention or RTI is a one point oh seven. That's pretty big. All over the top is teacher estimates of achievement. That's just teachers believing kids can do it. and sticking with that and believing in owning it and having that positive, and having that confidence in their students. And then collective efficacy with your teachers, self-reported grades is pretty high. So there's some things that are up there, but looking at the meta-analysis, one of the things that we're looked at is, how could a bell schedule, how can we do some of these things and get better with a bell schedule? Um, classroom discussion, you know, I'll, I'll kind of throw some stuff over to Corey in a little bit here, but we'll talk about what a classroom discussion looks like in a forty-two minute class versus a sixty-five minute class. Those are very different things. Um, RTI, response intervention, what can you do in forty minutes when you're doing intervention versus sixty, sixty-five, seventy minutes? And actually, um, those are some things that we start to think about. Teacher clarity, teacher clarity isn't, well, I mean, reword things, it's what's in the classroom, what's going on around the students, that they know exactly what's happening the entire time, they know the goals, they know the outcomes. Those are the things that they're looking for. Um, and these are all things that we can do. Feedback, again, what does it look like when I write a paper and get that feedback? When I work on a math problem and I get that feedback, we know that timing feedback is important. And so within a bell schedule, how can you take a class period and do some of these things really easily and start to have a big impact on student learning, and start to have a big impact on a, a variety of different things? And so this is why we're so glad to have Corey here. Um, I've been fortunate enough now to meet with a group of students that are principal advisory council. That's Corey amongst some students from freshmen to seniors um that join, um, I would, I would hope to be a little more consistent, but COVID stuff, we don't mean as consistent as you like. We've, we've met a number of different times, talked about grading, talked about assessments, we've talked about how's it just going, what's it like in class, finals, all kinds of stuff. Um, but one of the things I brought to them was the bell schedule, kind of what does it look like for you students? Because one of the things I was hearing a lot was, and even in this group talked about it, and Corey, maybe you can talk a little bit about too now, is what does the sixty-five minutes look like now? Because we're kind of in this test frame, right, with COVID, remember, we've got this kind of weird schedule now, and we know that staying at home on a computer for sixty-five minutes isn't, like, that's not ideal. But for you in the classroom, Corey, what's it been like from sixty-five minutes to maybe even forty-two minutes? What that, what's that difference like then for you?
Yeah, so um, as you guys have heard, my name is Corey, and um, I just want to thank you guys for letting me have the opportunity to uh speak tonight and just give the student perspective. I'm really thankful for that, and also for Mr. DeYoung giving me a whole um lecture on the financial aspects of the school district. Um, so in terms of the sixty-five minute schedule, um, I feel like it's been pretty beneficial to me, honestly, and one of the reasons why, and we talked about this in our principal council advisory, is because of its length and kind of how it's used. Um, at first, when we were looking at the schedule, um, when we were uh talking about it in our advisory, we kind of were a little skeptical because of uh the, you know, the length of time, because we weren't used to that, and also kind of how the teachers might utilize this time. Some of us thought, like me, like, oh, maybe the teacher's gonna use this entire time just to lecture us, and we're just gonna have to sit through a bunch of just, you know, talking. But it's actually been a lot different than that, and uh I've personally really enjoyed it. Um, I feel that one of the things that I've really liked about it is that, you know, the teacher spends the time lecturing and, you know, giving us the lesson, but then, you know, we get time to, you know, talk to the teacher if we need help on something, we get time to work on homework, and just having that, like, you know, contact with a teacher, especially right after a lesson, is really beneficial, not only for me, but for, you know, really anyone, because, you know, it's fresh in our brains. And, you know, the time to work on the homework and even being collaborative with other students, um, it just, it really gives us, I think, a better um, a better, honestly, a better way to learn, and uh I have personally really enjoyed um, the sixty-five minute period. And you also might think that I have thought that maybe it's, you know, I've noticed the length of time, you know, versus, you know, the forty-two minute periods that I'm so used to. But I personally have really not noticed the uh difference that much. Um, maybe a little bit, but really not as much as you might think. And yeah, just with that extra time to speak with teachers, work on homework, collaborate with students, um, I feel has been really beneficial to me and uh the way I learn. So that's my perspective on it.
And I think we, you know, Corey, and I think what says this principal advisory council, to be honest, folks, is I, I literally ask a question, and I sit back and the group just starts like firing off, firing off things at me, of all, you know, they think, and you know, sometimes I'll agree or disagree, but they, they give really good input and valuable feedback. You know, and I, I think I hope to be able to bring them to our teachers at some point in the next two months, because they've just got such great insight, as you can tell by what Corey just talked about. Um, and just being able to look at the day differently, and there's certainly teachers who've been teaching in a forty-minute period for twenty-five years. It's an adjustment, right? It's, it's certainly going to be something to adjust to, but um they're doing such great work on adjusting and really provide that time. Corey, just briefly, can you talk about how the benefit that you've had with that stat or student-teacher access time? And like how you use that time where we use the, the computer program? Can you talk just briefly about that?
Yeah, so uh in terms of stat, we have our efficiency program where, you know, I'm sure you guys know about it, but basically you can um sign up for a specific teacher, or even like a, you know, a counselor, some, like really anywhere in the school for your stat period to kind of see uh see a teacher about uh, you know, an assignment, or to do corrections on something. I mean, it's really kind of um, various, what your, you know, purpose might be of going to that specific teacher. But um, I have really um enjoyed using that time and specifically that system, because coming from uh school, I actually used to go to Edgewood High School, um, when I was a freshman and part of my sophomore year. And we didn't have anything like this, so coming into this, you know, new school with this brand-new system, it was a little confusing, but I have really, you know, seen a great benefit from it, because of the fact that I have this designated time where I can, you know, go and see a teacher and get help with something specific, and uh, you know, and have other people in the classroom too that I can collaborate with. Um, I've just seen it as something really uh beneficial and great. So that's my perspective on kind of our stat period and what I've been using it for.
Thank you, Corey. Yeah, it's certainly been something that is evolving for us, who want to continue to get better with. Um, but it's something we're proud of, and being able to have students have some choice time, and teachers are the pulse students in and do small groups, and as we expand our time, be able to use that time to put interventions together. So just something I thought was really important for, because I know that there was some work done prior to my arrival around getting that advisory, kind of that stat in there, and I just think it's really important to continue to have that student perspective as we move forward with that, because you'll start to see a little bit how that can, um, and what that looks like. So um, I guess, you know, so why change now, right? What, what, what's the point of changing now? Everyone's been dealing with change, 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 change. We just want normalcy. I, I get that. Um, but I've been hearing a lot from students and from staff, like the eight periods instead are a lot of time in the day. We have eight transitions. We spend almost an hour in the halls, like forty-five minutes in the halls. And actually, at the high school level, with, you know, our instructional minutes, um, you know, we tend to be the one that holds the district back and get close to that DPI minute, that limit piece too. So making sure that we're having our instructional minutes um there. But eight periods in a stat is a lot. And all I heard was, it's like a sprint, it's like you get done, you're exhausted, but now you all of a sudden have eight pieces of homework for eight different classes, and it's a half hour each, and what kid has four hours every single night, five days? You know, it just, it can be overwhelming, and just to be able to, they've been doing four or five classes now with COVID, and it's been like, oh, this is kind of nice. I could just kind of like, I may have homework in other classes, but I can just focus on four or five a day. Um, and then just again, that principal advisory group has really um been able to push a lot. And then forty-two minutes of instructional time can be a bear to dive in deep. I mean, I think of really trying to dive in, you know, breadth versus depth, right? Can we dive in deeper, not just teach everything, but teach a lot about one thing? And how can we dive in with some of that? And so we, we want to be able to do that, and then if, honestly, if you're in welding class, tell me how much time you have welding, if you are doing, I, I think I saw Pam on the call, I won't even ask her how much welding time they actually get in forty-two minutes, but it's like, you get in, you get set up, you weld, I mean, and they clean up, feel the half sixty, sixty-five minutes with hands on, but it's hands-on dirt, hands-on wood, welding machine, whatever, our project clay, or your band instrument. You can dive in deep, you can, you can do more in that time. Um, and, and that, we felt that's really important. Um, and then being able to have some students, like Corey said, just get some homework done. A lot of times is teacher teaches for a half hour, they say, here's your homework, and goodbye. And you don't even get that feedback loop back of, hey, I want to go run through this one problem real quick before I go, so I make sure I go home, and I practice it right, not just practice the way I think, and that might be a way that we're, we're not practicing it the right way. So um, that's kind of why now, and I actually had a lot of people say to me, if we're gonna make a change long quiz, let's do it. Because I will tell you, in two years from now, we are not gonna have an appetite for change. And we've actually been talking about this since last January with my staff. Um, and, but we had some tights, things that we really felt were important when we went through this decision-making process. Part of it is having no impact on FTE. We don't want to be having any impact, whether it's adding, subtracting, we want to have a neutral impact on FTE. I know how important that is, especially now with budgeting, making sure that we are budget neutral. Um, we also have shared staff, whether it's music, business, world language, we have shared staff that we have to consider, the schedule has to work for both. Again, we're not gonna have an impact on FTE. Stay between eight oh five and three twenty-five. Lunches will not get shorter, for all those wondering if lunch is gonna get shorter, we're not shortening lunch, lunch will be the same. Um, and then keep and even increase, try to find a way to increase daily instructional minutes, um, and then get students' staff input, uh, was really important. And so we're actually able to, last January, we started, got some teachers together, and we started to discuss um block schedules and try not, we started to dive in, like, what are the big things for us? What do we want to make sure are really important? Um, and one of the things you'll see here, I, I highlighted here, is keeping eight periods. If you're, if you're a student of Monthorup, one thing you benefit from is having options. You can take band, and you can take AP classes, and you can take art, and you can take all these things, because you have eight class periods a day. Um, or eight, eight class periods to you. When I was in Middleton, you had seven, some places have six. And that, that has an impact on what you, we can get access to, what you can um expose yourself to. And we really were taking pride in that work, and that was something that we felt was a, so we wanted to keep those options. Um, we also discussed the importance of our shared staff, making sure that there was no impact there. Um, but also, it's gonna take some time to adjust teaching practices. And if we go into that eighty, ninety-minute class period, that's double. That's a whole different ballgame in terms of uh teaching practices and, and how you approach teaching. So just thinking about what that could look like in some of the tights if we were to move forward. Um, so I'm gonna show you some examples, then I'll stop any questions, I'll dive back in again, but so one of the things we looked at was, Monona Grove has a, some of a, of a, I would call it a, a, a block schedule. Um, Middleton has the same, where they have kind of an A, A B day, some classes will have four or five in a day, the next day, they will have two or three classes. But they can range from eighty-five to ninety-five minutes, seven or eight different class options, and sometimes their advisory runs with their lunch. And that happened in Middleton, and I will tell you, when your advisory or your stat runs within lunch, you get no particip, you get, people are like, nice, cool, hour and twenty-minute lunch, perfect, peace out. Like, Middleton actually put a point two-five credit on the advisory to keep engaging. And so the, again, those are one of those things we were really trying to make sure that we look to avoid, but block schedule was one from Monona Grove, as well as I came from Middleton, so I knew um quite a bit about that. Um, trimesters is another one, five to six classes per trimester, sixty, seventy minutes, so that sweeps by the time. Um, but there's definitely, you could have a class where you could have math, second and third trimester, and then not have it again until the next second, third trimester. So you could go, you know, almost a full year without having a, you know, you could go eight, nine months without having a math class, or, or an English class, or a writing class, or something. That was, those gaps can be problematic, and that was just something that our statues didn't, that retention can be hard, and that was something that just didn't seem like it fit Monthorup. Um, but they liked the sixty, seventy minutes, they liked the idea of being able to reduce the number of classes in a day. So it's like, what could it look like? What are the different things we could do? Um, and what I'm gonna show you in a couple of minutes here is very similar to another schedule we looked at, which was DeForest. Um, but again, here's some of the things that we thought were really important, sixty, sixty-five minutes. We want to continue to have stat access, um, and whether it's uh two, two short ones or one long one, obviously, we can adjust there. Um, making sure that advisory, really want to strengthen our advisory program. Um, one of the things we're gonna be doing over the next six months, I'm working with Sarah Straka, and they said corporate and IEP, as well as some staff, on really finding a really research-based advisory program to really dive into some of that mental health, whether the ACP work with college and career readiness. Um, and just some of those things, any gritty grade checks, and really being a lot more deliberate with our advisory. Um, and then only be able to have four or five classes a day. Again, these were all kind of tights, things that people liked, people thought if we can create something that captures these pieces, we're gonna be in a good place. Um, so what, what I did is I took DeForest, because it had a lot of these things. Um, and what we did is I came up with, here's that color coding thing for you, Leah, it just felt like color coding rainbow for you to see it. Um, so let me, let me walk through a couple of things for you here. If you see on an A day as a column, right, there's five different days here. Um, on an A day, you would have first, second, fourth, and sixth. And you'll see two fourth periods, that's because we have lunch, two lunches, and so you'll have two different sets of fourth-period classes going at a time. And then you have air advisory. Um, and then on a B day, you would go one, three, four, six, seven. And so you kind of go through each day, it looks a little bit different. Um, sixty-five minutes, half-hour lunch, um, stats fifty-five minutes. And really being able to see teachers, you'll see them three, students would see teachers three times out of five. Uh, but they'd see them for sixty-five minutes, and so they really be able to dive in deeper. Um, and this is similar again to what DeForest has, but they have seven class periods, not eight, so the rotation is a couple of days longer. Um, and there, the other, one of the adjustments too is on A and B days, you might have an eleven-twenty-five lunch, and then on CDE, you might have a twelve-thirty-five lunch. It just depends on what course you would take for those two pieces. Um, I will tell you what's beautiful about the referendum is we have screens and monitors all over the place in the high school. We're gonna be adding a couple more. Um, talking to students in DeForest, she said, it's like a week, week and a half, and you kind of get used to what you got, what day, like, oh, it's an A day. I have these classes. Oh, it's a B day, I have these classes. Um, and the teachers love it there. Um, that's one thing that, talking to principal, she said, if I took this schedule away, my staff would probably have me, well, she's retiring, but they, you know, try to get her to leave. Um, but really, we felt it meant a lot of the things that were important, really having a strong stat, keeping advisory to help us increase and make that a better advisory, make it a bit more robust, having less periods during the day to have to focus on in terms of work, but also making sure, and I'll tell you instructional minutes. Um, this runs, I think, one ninety, or no, one ninety-five a week out of five days, we currently are at two-ten. So you lose about fifteen minutes of per-class period, but talking to teachers, one of the things is, well, Cody, if I do, if I have a forty-two minute class, and I get dealt a content or a concept, I sometimes don't, I don't teach the last six or seven minutes, because I can't dive back in, and now it's just kind of this, this like loose time. And they felt that that transition time would be made right back up, and it really wouldn't be lost in instructional time. Um, and that was something I heard from a couple of schools had went to a similar rotation. So I leave it here. Corey, do you want to talk about anything we talked about here around this, or if people have questions for me or Corey too, as you look at this color-coded rainbow um schedule? Corey, do you think it's gonna be hard track these five days? Do you think you, and you can be honest here, this is, I told you earlier, I said, right, this is time to be honest, so.
No, I um, I thought about this too. Um, and at, you know, at first, it's a little intimidating, I'll admit, but um, in terms of the, you know, A, B, C, D, E day, and the rotation, as well as the um periods, uh, I do have some, you know, history with that, because Edgewood High School does do a six-day rotating, you know, schedule. So not having, you know, the same, you know, classes every single day, the same schedule like it used to be, uh, is not, for me, not going to be as top of a transition, transition. It might be for other students, but just knowing, kind of knowing my classmates and um knowing their routines and stuff like that, I think that at first, it might be a little confusing, and there might be some bumps, but overall, I think that we're gonna get used to it, and I think that also, I think we're gonna like it better, and I think people are gonna see the benefit in it, so that's how I feel about it.
Questions for Cody or Corey?
It's weird, Rod, that's my brother's name is Corey, so I hear people say Corey and Cody, I think of like my brother and I, sorry, it was just said that on the flashback, and so.
That's all right.
Hey, Cody, if you don't mind me just mentioning how grateful I am to you and your leadership team for giving this such great study. And you even went an extra step by not only engaging our students, but you held a forum for parents as well to um, learn a little bit about the why behind the change, and I'm hopeful that maybe as we get this off the ground, maybe you and your leadership team, maybe Corey could come back and just update the board, uh, after we get this launched, to see how it goes.
Yeah, certainly. I think being able to give access, I think one thing I've always tried to pride myself on is just being transparent, know what's happening, and being open and getting that feedback, um, and being able to answer questions. And so being able to have a students, um, had a student kind of open house one morning, and then we had a parent one, I think Leah, you think you had spent some time with us there. Um, and there's certainly some questions and, and some wonders and concerns, I think, when you have five rotating days, but um, I said, I trust when the students tell me they can figure it out. I also, you know, know that we have some pretty amazing, resilient students. We have some pretty amazing, resilient students and we want to do our best for them. But yeah, I think. Being able to come back together to talk to this group about how it's going as well as. As we get the year going, we'll have to have some conversations with kids and families as we go on Steve. So certainly some more opportunities for more conversations around it. Um, as we start to then kind of put that pen to paper. And this might tweak a little bit between now and September as we kind of. Make sure that everything aligns, but know that it aligns with middle school, doesn't have an impact on FTE. Um, actually opens up, talked to Will Jansen, that was a big conversation. What does this look like for band, right? That's a big part of our culture here at the high school. Um, and part of it was like, wow, I don't think I have to have band lunch now. That's kind of nice, right? And so some of those things we're actually able to get rid of because we can use our stat a little bit differently and it's a little bit longer. So. Um, yeah, I mean, I think we, we talked to a lot of different stakeholders um, prior to putting this together and I do want to thank my teachers. And my administrative assistants and because I've been breathing this for a long time and I think you're probably sick of hearing me ask questions and asking me about it and just want to move forward. So I want to thank them for their patience with this.
Any other questions for Cody or Corey?
Yeah, this Leah, I have a question. Okay, so uh, say it's a C day and it's a snow day. Is the next day a C day or is the next day, do we skip C and now our next day is a D day?
Ah, I'm slide for that.
I thought I saw one.
So, um, I think that's probably one of the few things is, um, if on snow, do you lose that day? Is the otherwise, the rotation throughout the whole year, your rotation goes through the end of the year. Um, I actually have one for next year, the next two years, I went through our district calendar to kind of even it out. Just to see where things land and if there's a day that gets impacted more by. Actually, we were going to run classes on A days early releases, but if the one, one. Day got impacted more than others and unfair balance. And so I think an early release days will run one through eight, right? So there's not a negative impact on all classes. They all actually have the same, like no. Before it was, I think a B day was actually impacted a ton on those early release days oddly enough. And then there's classes are shorter and now you, now you run into this imbalance. Um, so we got rid of that, but yeah, if there was a snow day. Um, and or a cold day, we would lose that day in the rotation.
So one of the things that came up on the parent meeting was the early release days and right now when you run, what, eight classes, it's like. Twenty-minute classes and not really beneficial. So maybe we can come up with a. I mean, I get why we would do that, but also at the same time, there's, if it, if we're only running. There's got to be something better we could do with it. I don't know what that.
Yeah, and I think that's certainly one of those things like, you know, put the big asterisks of how we can make, I think Mondays are the one days, those, those. Once a month, right? Those second Tuesday, Mondays of each month. Are really beneficial for our staff and getting that stuff done in the afternoon, that professional development. I, I, I'm so grateful we have that time. But then how do we spend the morning differently with our students to still be effective? Um, and I think we'll continue to have conversations with that, Leah. Um, and I think that thankfully we have some time on that one. Um, but yeah, it certainly will be a part of how we problem solve going forward. And it might have to be tweaked, right? We might do something beginning, go, you know what? That didn't, wasn't good. We need, we need to be, so we had to be able to be willing to change that. Uh, but I really think the core concepts of the rotation will not be included on those early release days. Also to find a way to be creative with our time there. Um, and, and what it looks like, because we don't want to have one group of classes being impacted more so than others. I think that was our biggest piece.
Right? You have like a sub alternate, alternating. Schedule, you know, first early releases, one through four, and then second is. Five, six, seven, eight, like, yeah, that could get confusing as well.
We'll, we'll figure something out, but I think that's a great point, right? It's how, how can we get creative with those days and really be useful? And thankfully, sometimes those are days that we've used for assemblies or our, our, our Veterans Day. Beautiful event that we have for that or Memorial Day, right? We've been, we've been thankful to be able to use some of those too. Um, which then ends up being more time, you know, not that we've had an assembly for a while. We get back to that. And we've, we've, we've been able to do that. So I know that not every Monday ends up being classes and as we use it for. Really great um, things that our whole school are doing, whether it's from mental health, whether it's the Memorial Day, Veterans Day, stuff like that.
Anything else on this topic, Cody?
Thank you, Corey. Thanks for joining us here.
Thanks for a great job and thanks Corey for, for joining us. Great job.
Thank you, Corey. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
All right, item sixty, COVID nineteen update, Dr. Salerno.
Good evening again, board members and community members. A couple of updates for you. First. As you no doubt read in the newspaper, the Wisconsin Supreme Court in a four to three decision invalidated Governor Evers' public health emergency declarations. The court's decision in the Ufabeck versus Evers case. Declared that a series of public health emergency declarations, declarations were invalid. We still will implement the requirement of face masks as part of our policy work implemented as a school district over a year ago. Those not wishing to um, wear face masks and uh. Concerned about this district must have. Are welcome to reach out to me so that we can make arrangements for their children to access our learning online. We are actually finding more and more families are interested in bringing their kids back than was originally indicated in our survey. And uh. I imagine we are still committed to maintaining that three feet physical distancing uh, to the greatest extent possible. Uh, and those families who are wanting to onboard now, uh, we ask that you give us a little time. Uh, if you didn't initially indicate that you wanted to be in person, because we've now established our schedules, we've established our classrooms, we've established our space. And we want to be cognizant of making certain that we. Honor uh, order number fifteen, which came out on Friday afternoon. Any reference to. Physical distancing is um, actually uh, in terms of a specific. Uh, feet distancing has been removed from order fifteen, nothing states. Uh, anything related to three feet, six feet and the like. We are still operating as a school district with the intent of uh, using the CDC guidance. Around three feet to the greatest extent possible. And of course, when individuals are eating. Uh, or drinking, uh, that they be at least six feet away from one another as much as possible. Staff are encouraged to maintain six feet from one another at all times and six feet from our young people as much as possible as well. Uh, but again, as we know, the order does permit uh, three feet within classrooms. Uh, and so the, the next point that I think is important just to alert our community to update is that of course today, April the fifth is the first day in which. Students uh, age sixteen or older uh, can be queued to receive the. The vaccine. Uh, on my calls with health officials, it appears a coordinated, more systemic effort statewide really is wanting in regard to supporting. Our high school students. And given that, we will continue to work with our sources to see if something could be offered internally as we did with many, many uh, interested staff. To see if vaccines or connections with uh, area outfits. Uh, to alert students who might be interested in receiving those vaccines can do so. And lastly, I'm so excited that we continue to be on track for a full one hundred percent return to school on Wednesday, September the first. Uh, that's only months away, uh, but we continue to uh, see the promise and the hope of what the future holds for all of us. And to the extent to which we can be of help and answering questions that families might have. Never ever think that it's a problem to give us a buzz. We're always more than happy to speak with you. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that might be here tonight.
This is Leah, I have a question. Um, so with the mask mandate, stuff being shut down, um, I know that's affected some SNAP benefits. Does that affect any of our like lunch benefits that we're doing right now?
Great question. So the, the survey that we're working on right now to complete in order to avoid that. We're trying to understand um, the full impact of this decision. On uh, our end users, our families, and certainly if there's some alert, we will continue to keep parents apprised of it.
Other que- questions or comments for Steve?
Thank you.
Great. Thanks a lot, Steve. Item seven, action item seven A, first reading consideration of revisions to policy number three sixty-four. School counseling program referred by the Safety and Wellness Committee on March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, thanks so, so much for having me and being able to present this policy. Um, I want to see. Steve, are you able to bring it up or do you want me to?
Be happy to.
Thank you. Um, if you looked at the um, kind of the redlined version of this policy, what you'd notice is that almost the entire policy is redlined. Um, there, there's really nothing original that was left from it. Um, and so um. It, 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 um, it is kind of exciting. The, the biggest thing that got changed from it and Leah had mentioned earlier was the last time it was from. Nineteen eighty-seven. Is changing it from a guidance counselor model to a school counselor model. And so really Satish in the last presentation um, to Saw gave a really. A great explanation of, of why that is, but guidance really pigeonholes you into one piece of the job. The school counseling model and school counseling as a whole. Represents almost everything that they're doing uh, within the school from counseling. Um, it, to providing support for parents, families, guardians, community, all of those areas and. And so basically this policy um, kind of states that, that we're going to follow the Wisconsin comprehensive school counseling model. Um, have collaborative relationships and that was one of the pieces that Saw changed was uh. Um, taking the word parents out and changing it to guardians. Um, to really be encompassing of, of all family structures. Um, and uh, and, and that's what we'll continue to do is follow this counseling model. Um, we tagged it in there so that um, families can access it. Um, but that includes counseling, curriculum, student planning, responsive services and support systems. Um, and then we kind of changed a little wordage, um, but that. The, the conversations that's um, students and school counselors have are privileged. Um, and though that's specifically defined by the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. And then all of that criteria and what's confidential and what's not is also tagged and cross-referenced below. That's the policy.
This is Leah, motion.
Leah has, Jeff has seconded a motion to approve. Uh, excuse me, to prove the revisions to policy one, excuse me, three sixty-four. We can do that by roll call. Um, tonight, is there any further discussion? Hearing on all, Danny. Diana.
Yes.
Diana's a yes, Jeff.
Yes.
Jeff is a yes, Jeff's Jessica. Jessica's a yes, Kimberly.
Yes.
Kimberly's a yes, Leah.
Yes.
Yes, a yes. And I M E S, the S's are seven, the no's are zero, the motion is uh, the motion is approved and the. Uh, revisions to policy three sixty far, three sixty-four likewise uh, approved. Item seven B.
Thank you.
Generation of alterations to the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year. Grade six to twelve calendar, Dr. Salerno.
Good evening again. Uh, April twelfth marks a very special date in that our K five students are coming back to school four days a week. A week later now, uh, we'll have our middle and high school students join us. And in order to reflect that, uh, we've needed to update the calendar with your permission, please.
Motion to approve.
Kimberly has moved and Jessica seconded. A motion to approve the alterations to the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year grades six through twelve calendar. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on all is in favor will say aye. All those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the alterations to the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year grade six. Through twelve calendar are approved. Item six, excuse me, eight A, citizen comments. Those who wish to speak should please text their first and last name to six oh eight two five zero nine one six six. Six oh eight two five zero nine one six six. One once. Going twice, going three times. Item nine, future agenda items. Dr. Salerno, is there anything worth noting here?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay, terrific. Uh, item ten, schedule of next meeting. Anything you'd like to point out here?
Want to just put on uh, everyone's radar uh, that we will have a very special evening for our retirees. Uh, that's coming up. I believe it's Wednesday, June the seventh. It was in our board recap. Uh, this is a nice opportunity for us to recognize uh, the class of two thousand twenty-one prepared to retire. But you know, we didn't get a chance to congratulate our friends from two thousand twenty. So we're going to invite them too and. Uh, their significant other spouses, uh, and hope the board might also have some time to join us for some hors d'oeuvres and uh, light beverages.
Awesome. Very good. Uh, item eleven. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Jeff has moved and Kimberly has seconded. Uh, a, a motion to adjourn. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on all is in favor will say aye.
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 All those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and we are adjourned. Thank you.
That's true.
That was awesome. And it was like, I was like, oh.